Thank you.
I got five o'clock, Michael.
All right, we'll call this meeting to order. Angela, can you do a roll call, please?
Unmute, Angela.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. I just didn't want to, you know, be talking. Ms. Baker.
Here.
Mr. Butler.
Here.
Ms. Eldridge.
Here.
Mr. McCoy. Ms. Quine.
Here.
Mr. TD.
Here.
Thank you.
Hey, we we need a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Angela, you want to do a roll call vote? Please.
Yes.
Mr. Butler.
Yes.
Ms. Eldridge.
Yes.
Ms. Quine.
Yes.
Mr. TD.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, our presidential report is going to be rather, it's going to be rather short. I just want to thank the trustees and the Delaware County District staff for their patience and tolerance as we continue to adjust to the new normal, whatever that may be. I really appreciate you guys being so supportive as we're going through various steps in moving forward. That's, that's it?
Short but sweet.
Are you feeling okay?
I'm
Trapped. It's trapped.
I'm taking on a kinder, gentler personality.
Oh, that's the new normal.
Angela, can we get the fiscal officers' report, please?
Of course. You have my written report, of course. I, and so I just want to give you an update where we are on the PLF for June. I received the distribution for June from the Delaware County and from Franklin County both. And it's down about 15% from June of last year. So, and it's about $33,000 less than we got in June of last year. If we say that we're halfway through the year with June, if it's similar, if the trend is similar to what we had the first half, we're not going to, we're not going to get our estimate. It's going to be about $200,000 less than our estimate. So we need to at least break even on the, the rest of the year. Just to, just, we're a little bit below estimate. I'm not, here's what I, I've shared this with George. I'm not concerned yet. So we still have our property tax collection. So we've got the rollbacks. And so we've gotten the full distribution for the first half of the year from the property taxes. So that is fine. And we will continue to monitor the PLF.
So what is OLC saying? Do they have any, any future projections or any ideas, solutions, or?
They have Dr. Harold Fleeter looking into what the Department of Taxation is going to give us an update. And they're thinking it's going to be in August. It's usually sooner, but it's not going to be until after August. That they're going to give us a new certified PLF distribution.
So are these assumptions going to be?
Is that what you, is that what you read?
Yeah, that's what I read. We should have a better handle going into the summer. One of the things that we've got to remember is that they pushed back the date of income tax to August 15. So we, we lost a big chunk what we would have gotten in April or May from the April collection because that was pushed forward. So what we see, what we get in September is going to tell us a lot about where we're going to be for the rest of the year, I think. I think also there was a big jump in retail sales that was reported by the US Department of Commerce today. And so what we got to see is whether or not we've got a V or a U or a, what kind of a drop we're going to have and what kind of recovery we're going to have.
So we're going to, so when we start working on the budget, are we going to build some of these potential assumptions into the budget?
We will be, yes.
Yes. Okay. So that's an update. That's what I know about the PLF. Of course, you have my written report. And there's a supplemental for donations. And I have a motion later that I'd like for another supplemental, but after you maybe approve the purchasing of land. So that is later.
Okay.
Is all I have.
Angela, so we need a, a motion to approve the financial reports, invoices, and investments.
So moved. Second.
Angela? Roll call, please.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Butler?
Yes.
Ms. Eldridge?
Yes.
Ms. Quine?
Yes.
Mr. TD?
Yes.
Thank you.
And, and if you folks don't mind, I'm going to combine the next two, which is the approval for supplemental appropriations for made for books donated, eventually approved with gratitude, the donations for the following individuals, Mary Jane Samuels and Homeschooling.
Oh, Nick is here.
Nick is here.
Mr. McCoy is here.
He didn't vote on the last thing. He was here.
Oh.
Well.
Well, hey, Nick. Good to see you.
Sorry, Mr. McCoy. I didn't, why is he not popping up on my screen? Mr. McCoy, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, there he is.
There.
All right. Okay, so the, the three combined motions are to the supplemental appropriations for books donated and donations.
So moved. Second.
Angela, you want to do a roll call?
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Butler?
Yes.
Ms. Eldridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Ms. Quine?
Yes.
Mr. TD?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, George, you're on.
Okay, I've sent my report out as well, but I've got a couple of updates here. The first is that we have put together our reopening schedule for the library. We worked through this with the management staff. And what we're proposing is to reopen the Delaware Library on Monday, June 29th for browsing and for PC use, for use of computers. We'll have restricted time on the computers because we have some issues with the new software for screen sharing. So IT is going to be involved. And then we will do the other branches the following week, which would be Orange and Powell would be reopening on July 6th. And Ostrander, because they're never open on Monday, would reopen on Tuesday, July 7th. And again, we'll have limited computer hours, but we'll be open a lot more hours. We're going to actually move from the four hours a day that we're open right now for the pickup, for the curbside pickup and drive-through to being open eight hours a day, Monday through Saturday. So we are looking forward to getting back to having regular hours and having people in the building again. We have some Plexiglas on order to help protect the computer desk at Delaware and the reference desk at Delaware, as well as the cert desk to ensure that we can keep people safe. We've also got more hand sanitizer on order for the public. We've got enough at SCAP right now. But we need to make sure that we've got enough so the people who are using the self-check and places like that have, have access to sanitizer as well. So we are, we're really feeling good about this. We are going to be opening right about the same time that a lot of the other libraries in central Ohio are going to start doing, again, the same kind of limited hours. The closest ones to us have not announced yet. Worthington and Westerville haven't announced hours yet that they're going to be open. Worthington is doing curbside pickup. But I haven't, and Westerville is doing curbside and lobby pickup of their books. But I don't believe they've opened or announced any hours yet to be open to the public. And right now Columbus Metro is only opening for computer use and for curbside pickup. So I've got a list of libraries, medium-sized libraries like this one, also the ones in the Central Library Consortium. So basically, we're, we're keeping pace a little. Some of them aren't opening all of their libraries as quickly as we are. But I think we've got a good plan. The staff, the managers went through a lot of discussion yesterday on this. And of course, we're working on this more than just yesterday. But we are, we're, we're confident that we can be open and do a good job of keeping people safe. And, and yet give them the opportunity to use the library again by, like I said, June 29th here and July 6th and 7th, the other library. Are there questions?
I do believe that the only library that's open full-time in the central Ohio area is Alexandria Public Library, which is right outside of Grandville.
Yeah, it's a, it's a very small library in a community that hasn't been hit at all that I'm aware of by the COVID, or I mean, not like other areas by COVID. So yeah, I think you're right, Michael. I think that's the only one that's actually back to regular hours and being open all the time in central Ohio right now. Other questions or comments? Well, as I said in the report, we had the, the masks situation was taken out of our hands by the county prosecutor's office. We said we couldn't require masks. We will ask people when we reopen to, we will strongly encourage it. We will have some disposable masks here that people can wear, and we won't require it. We did have one email from one of the staff members who commented on this after the last board meeting. And she asked that it be shared with the board. We will share that. I'll send that out after this meeting, just so you can see what, what she has to say. And then on something that has nothing to do with COVID at all. Nicole and Molly and I, over the last couple of days, worked on a frequently asked questions list about the new library that we will share with managers, and we will share with you, so that if you get questions about the new library, you'll be able to have, we'll have consistent answers about that in terms of things like why we want with larger size, why we're going where we are, what we did with the community input that we got, and a little bit about the design. There's also a picture of one of the drawings of the library. So we've got that as well. So I'll be sending that out either tonight or first thing tomorrow morning to the board. They'll have access to that as well.
George, are you taking suggestions from the committee? I, I well, those of us who are on the committee, the board members on the committee, are you taking suggestions from us if we see something that might be of use to add to it?
Oh, yeah, sure. This is a living document. We can always add to it and, and, you know, keep it going, especially too, if you hear any questions that we hadn't heard. So yeah, sure. If you've got, if you've got something you want to add to this document, feel free. That's, that's no problem at all. Let's see. Trying to think if I've got anything else right in front of me here. No, I don't. So that's all I've got. If you've got any questions or anything else you'd like to bring up, other than that, I'm, that's my report.
Here none. So, so let's move on to the Friends of the Library Report. Karen, do you have anything to add to your report?
Yes, I do. In addition to all of the wonderful things I told you, especially that we gave a lot of books to the Delaware City Schools, and we're very proud of that. We are working on a scavenger hunt for downtown Delaware and downtown Powell. So Holly, I will be contacting you to talk about some businesses that we can get involved. It's a way to keep our name out in front of the public. It's going to be a fun little thing.
Great idea.
It's not going to be a lot of work. It's not going to be a lot of effort, but it's going to be something that families can do. Walk down around and pick up things, and we'll have drawings for prizes and stuff. So we are starting to think about some things to keep our name and the library's name in the community without doing the normal things that we usually do. So look for information in our newsletter and on our website.
That's a great idea.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The Liberty Township Library Building Committee, Holly or Brenda, do you have anything to add for the board?
No, well, not yet. We'll see how conversation goes, but excited about today's motion. So, yes.
All righty. Okay, so we have some unfinished business and I apologize. Brenda, did you have anything to add?
No, I didn't.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. Anticipated motions, unfinished business. We have a motion for the to build a new branch, and I'll, I'll read the motion. Whereas the Board of Trustees of the Delaware County District Library seeks to build a new branch library in the Powell Liberty Township Concord Township area. And whereas the board has determined that the lot on the northwest corner of the intersection of Holmes Stikes Road is an appropriate location for this new library. And whereas the authority to purchase real estate is granted to public library boards or trustees by the ORC Section 3375. Point 20 subsection C. We therefore resolve that by an affirmative vote of not less than two-thirds of the Board of Trustees as required by ORC Section 3375.35. The library will purchase approximately 3.71 acres, subsidized, subdivided from partial number 319-230-01-003-000 at a rate of 50,000 per acre. The final purchase price to be determined by survey. So I need a motion.
So moved, so moved. Waiting a while to do that.
We need a second?
Second.
Okay, well, can you do a, a, Holly, why don't you do the roll call?
Is there any discussion?
I don't think it counts if I do it, does it?
Is there any, is there any discussion?
This wording, I know it's complicated, but it is required by law. So that's why it's so kind of
All right, well, Brenda, you go ahead and do, you go ahead and do the roll call, knowing that Holly is ecstatic.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Butler?
Yes.
Ms. Eldridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Ms. Quine?
Yes.
Mr. TD?
Yes.
Thank you.
The second, the second motion is to approve in principle the conceptual estimate, design, and timeline for the new branch building as presented by SHP and Marker.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to say one thing before what this is, it's, as it says, it's in principle. This is not written in concrete. I still have some issues with, partially, it's the roof line. We've had so many issues with Orange. I want, I want to make sure that we do the best that we can to make sure that whatever roof they put on this thing is as simple and as reliable as possible. So we, and I'm also not crazy about the kind of wing structure that they have over the front entrance, stuff like that. So you're not approving this as a, in concrete. Besides, we also still have to go to the Powell City planning and zoning people. So there may be other changes. But what you're approving here is the, the basic concept, the basic size, the, the expenditure for the, the building roughly, because again, that'll be, that'll be finalized over the next few months. But basically that you're agreeing with this so that we can go forward and work with SHP and Marker to get the technical drawings and start to work on all the other design things that have to be done in order to get this through the zoning, get the construction started.
And so George, and so George, I'm assuming then that the Liberty Township Building Committee will be getting back together for these issues that you just went over.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, does, does the committee or anyone else have any questions regarding Georgia's comments?
I don't have any questions, but if I might just address something that has, has come up, and that's the number of floors of this library. The, the library, conceptually, that's been offered to us is a, it's a lovely, traditional design that will fit into the community. It's not offensive in any way. It's not unusual in any way. It, it mirrors the community and the community's values. There is nothing about the library that is extraordinary. And by that, I mean, there's no water slide. So, so the reason, and, and I have, I have heard comments about the fact that there's a basement, no basement. And I'd like to address that if I might. This has nothing to do with basement, no basement. It has to do with what the community has told us they need in a library. And because that lot is that size, the library has to be three floors in order to have parking. Now, we could do this library all on one floor and have no basement, but then we'd have no parking. So, and, and Powell doesn't like you to go three stories high. So this isn't an op, an option here. This is, this is what the community wants. We're, we're responding to that, those needs. And it just happens that because that piece of property is the size and orientation that it is, that it's going to mean three stories. And one of those stories is a basement. This is not, the basement is not some luxury feature that's been, that's been added in.
You're absolutely correct, Holly, and well said. You're, you're right, you're right on point. Right on point.
And in terms, in terms of budget, we probably never should have had a number in our head to begin with. I think that the number we had in our head was based on 2009 estimates or 2008 estimates when the, when the Orange Branch was in development. So this library is neither over nor under a budget. It, it came in at what it came in at. And it's a very responsible design and a responsible use of space. So I just wanted to address though, getting, getting ahead of those if I could.
And you're, you're on point on that issue as well.
I think the word that we're using in the document that I'm going to send out to you for the design is timeless. That it's got a timeless sort of design that will fit into the community very nicely. And yeah, so.
George has the designer, has the designer of this done work in Powell before? Are they fairly confident that this is going to be okay with their?
We've actually taken some designs to them as a, just informally to see what they think. And basically, we're using a lot of the exterior things that's being, that was already approved by the development of the rest of this lot, which is going to have apartments in a small commercial strip. And so we're using a lot of the same architectural elements that they used, which they really liked. They, they thought that this has already been approved. They think that that's the way to go. So it hasn't been formally taken to them, but informally, we've gotten some really good positive feedback from folks at Powell.
That's all I needed to know, because, you know, as my experience with the city of Delaware is, is that they want you to fit into their template of what they want things to look like. And if you don't, it's many iterations.
Right. You're right.
And John went through all that, so we didn't have to.
Yeah. SHP's been in front of that. I think we probably had that conversation at one of our very first meetings. Because I'm with you, Scott. I have, have a little experience with that as well, so.
It's always good to work with the city ahead of time rather than at the last minute.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Oh, God, yes. It's a lot less expensive too, because you don't have change orders and everything.
That's right. Okay, so we, we had the motion to approve it?
Yes, we got a motion by Holly, seconded by Brenda on the floor.
Okay, we need a vote. Angela, would you accommodate us, please?
Certainly. Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Butler?
Yes.
Ms. Eldridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
May.
Ms. Quine?
Yes.
Mr. TD?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have some new business.
Do you want to do the supplemental appropriation for the land purchase to keep all three things together? And then we can do the, the personnel issue.
Okay, so.
To approve the supplemental.
In a certain order, so why can't we just go in order?
Okay, it doesn't matter. I just thought it'd be fun to do all the, the things about Powell at once.
We're not here for fun, George.
That's right. I'm sorry, Holly. I should have understood that.
What am I missing, man?
Okay, now we'll do the first one, then the facility specialist. The, the purpose of this is we've had a, a full-time facility specialist for about 20, 25 years for the library, Mark Reed. Mark, and then we added a part-time, because we knew we were going to be expanding the library, but also because we just had more, more things to do. And then Mark has gotten very sick and will be out for, for a while. So what I would like to do is have your approval to do what we were planning to do probably next year. And that is make the current part-time facility specialist position full-time. And then we'll, we'll basically have two full-time facility specialists if Mark is able to come back. We will need that with the extra buildings. And also we've been very fortunate. John, who's the part-time facility specialist, has helped us immeasurably already in things like the LED lighting program. And he's also been able to pick up a lot of Mark's stuff in his absence. I'd like to get that approval to make that full-time.
It's a, a need a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Angela, do you mind making a roll call, please?
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Butler?
Yes.
Ms. Eldridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Ms. Quine?
Yes.
Mr. TD?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next motion is to approve supplemental appropriation to purchase the land at $190,000. I need a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion?
The rea, I'll just explain the reason for, this is just an estimated amount. The contract for the land purchase has very strict timelines that things have to happen. And one of the things is I have to sign that the money has been lawfully appropriated and set an appropriation for land purchase when we did our appropriations resolution back in December of 2019. So this is so that when the contract is executed, I can actually say, yes, this is lawfully appropriated. So it may be a little more, it may be a little less. I'm not sure until after the survey. So this is really just an estimate at this point.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And can we get a roll call vote, young lady?
Yes. Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Butler?
Yes.
Ms. Eldridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Ms. Quine?
Yes.
Mr. TD?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. We're, we're on our way. Is it, Nicole, is there any public participation?
They're on about a 25-second delay from what we're, what's happening live right now. But no, the, the main participation was Amy's letter, as George mentioned earlier. And otherwise, it's just been people waving hi.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. We need a motion to adjourn?
We don't, can I ask, Michael, we don't meet next month, do we?
Well, we haven't been. So that's, that's a really good question. We have not met normally in July. If, if we think, if we feel that all the things that are going on with, with COVID and all of that, that we need to meet, so we can either talk about it now, or we can, you know, talk about it offline, or what's your thoughts?
Oh, I, I just wanted to clarify. I don't, I don't anticipate, I mean, I can't think of any reason. I mean, if, if something goes haywire, and I don't, can't imagine that it would, we can call a meeting. I just wanted to clarify.
That was me knocking on wood.
And, and Holly, the only thing that I would anticipate is that the building committee might be called to, to, to meet.
I hope so, yeah.
Yeah, regarding some of these other issues regarding the building. But other than that, I don't see a need to have a meeting in July. So are the other board members comfortable with that?
Yes. Didn't you at one point say you were going to plan a retreat?
Yeah, but this is not the time right now, because I, I think, I think the retreat is something that needs to be done in person. And, you know, we need to have a little laughter and things like that. So. and things like that. So no, not, at this point, no retreat.
One of the things we will have to keep an eye on is whether or not Governor Dewine continues the emergency resolution. Because the, the ability to do these meetings electronically only lasts while the emergency declaration is in place or until the middle or the end of December, whichever comes first. So I will keep an eye on that from the, we'll be tracking that with the Ohio Library Council. We've been providing, the Ohio Library Council has been providing information to General Assembly to continue, to see if we can continue this. Because the ability to have at least some members be able to come in electronically for meetings is something that some public bodies in Ohio have the right to do, but the vast majority of them don't. So we're, since we've had this opportunity over the last few months, and a number of boards and commissions and things have decided that they really like it, we may see more legislative action going to allow this to continue. But in the absence of that, we'll have to watch, make sure that we're not doing electronic meetings when we're not supposed to be.
Okay.
Michael, can I ask another question? George, do you, do you know if we've had some citizen participation in terms of Neil's vacant board seat?
As far as I know, we've had a number of people have applied to the commissioners. Their next step will be to decide who they want to interview. And then they will hold interviews and executive session at the, among commissioners and, and let us know who they've appointed.
Yeah, it's my understanding, we've had at least like three or four people that are interested, from what I've heard. No, but no names, just that there've been three or four people that have sent in applications.
They don't have to go out and stand on the street corner and try to recruit people. They actually did have people who have applied.
Yeah, we did. Super. Any other questions?
Just for general reference, have you guys, have you guys, has everybody here been pretty much hunkered down? I mean, are, this is just, I don't know if this is helpful for point of reference. Our church has been open for, I think, five weeks now for worship. And we, we have not had any reported cases of COVID. Now, we're practicing social distancing, hand sanitizing, masks and the whole bit. But we had a pretty, a pretty good-sized funeral here. And if, if there was ever going to be a spread issue, I thought that would be it, because people were grieving and hugging and whatever, mostly family members. And I just, I'm happy to report that we haven't had any cases that I know of. And, and things, people seem to be abiding pretty well by the distancing rules. So if that's any encouragement, I think, I think folks are kind of used to the routine now.
I think it seems to be kind of spread. I mean, some places you go and nobody's wearing a mask. Other places you go and people seem to really be paying attention to it. So I think it's, it's kind of hit or miss. When I was in the grocery store this week, it was, it was all over the place. A lot of people without them, some people with them. So I'm hoping that we will, we'll have that reaction when we open the libraries again, that people, you know, we're going to have the, you know, the plastic things on the floor to show people where to stand and all that sort of stuff. And the, like I said, the dividers and that sort of thing. So I know we went back to doing the radio show live last Friday. So they put up the dividers in the radio station and everything. In fact, Mr. Butler is going to be our guest on Friday on the, on the show. So.
Did they get that, did they get that additional wattage?
I'm sorry.
They get that additional wattage, and so, so many people.
Why would they need it, Michael? Because your, your presence alone would give them all the extra electricity they needed.
Oh, it couldn't be.
All right. I mean, we need a, we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you guys so much.
Bye, everyone. Happy Father's Day, y'all.
Yeah, happy Father's Day to others, too, as well.
Bye.
Thank you. All right. Take care, everybody.
Thank you. Bye.